Michelle, you don't have to answer.
I saw you out walking this morning, Sean.
Yeah, I thought I'd get a few steps in early, Julie.
Yep.
I love a day where it's the sun's coming up like that and there's not a lot of wind and.
Nice.
We've had a lot of them this winter. Quietly, he's listening and eating my bacon. That's funny. Well, it is nine o'clock or nine oh one, actually. I talked to Paul a couple of days ago and I anticipate that he's going to try and join, but I don't know the latest on what's going on in his life with Pat right now. So if he doesn't join, that's probably why so. Obviously, Donna is not on either. She's doing well, at least the last time I talked to her. I think Justin spoke to her most recently, which was midweek Wednesday. And actually, is Justin not on?
He is having internet problems, but he will be back momentarily.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. I'm just looking around the room a little bit there, so to speak, and.
Yeah.
Okay.
He was resetting his wifi.
Yeah, okay. Well, we can wait a second for him. That's, that's fine. I didn't do a count. Why? Your, your internet is behaving this morning?
Yep, I was a slammed everyone that I had completely rebooted my computer. So it's been a fun week. Because when you work in insurance, you have like fifty, not, I'm not exaggerating, like fifty passwords. So re-entering all those passwords and trying to keep my boss patient with the process.
Gotcha. Well, I just, while we're waiting there, there's Dustin connecting yesterday from about two thirty until four. David Gassan, the architect that we had hired at our last meeting. He and one other person from their firm took a tour of the thirty-five fifteen Broad Street site and walked through, took a lot of pictures, asked a lot of questions. So that step is underway, just so everybody is, is aware. I think they all thought there was quite a bit of potential there, so we'll see what they come back with. Dustin, everything okay with you?
Oh, yeah, I was just having some connectivity issues, so I tried resetting my modem.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay, well, we might as well get started. I appreciate everybody being on this morning and Justin's put together a nice agenda and a little packet for us. One of the topics that we discussed early on, wanting to spend a little more time on was the concept of gathering and the use of public input. And Justin, if you don't mind, why don't you just go over your memo real quick? I presume everybody's read it, but just to get everybody in the flavor of how we as a group from the staff perspective and otherwise interact with the public. If you could put that base out there, that'd be great.
Sure. So I kind of started with some of the items that are already listed in City Council's Goals and Objectives spreadsheet. And, you know, that includes things like holding at least two community meetings per year outside of normal city council meetings. Newsletters, post-ins to the, to the website, Facebook and email update. Exploring, doing exactly what we're doing with broadcasting meetings. Participation in regional boards, commissions and joint endeavors, reaching out to the, to the school district. Exploring ways to get more youth involvement with city council. Distribution, distributing information on water pollution and water quality. And then I kind of went into some of the things that, that, you know, we're currently doing, some of them day-to-day, some of them monthly, quarterly, so on and so forth. But kind of, you know, at its base, you know, every resident has the ability to get in touch with us and let us know if there's an issue or let us know their concerns on a day-to-day basis. They can walk in and we do get a ton of walk-ins, phone, email. Folks can send us an email through the website and we do get a number of those. When we send out email updates, folks can hit reply and an email goes, goes directly to me. When we post things to Facebook, residents have the ability to, to respond to those posts. And we do our best to, to answer those, those questions and interact with, with residents, giving them accurate information and the most updated information that we have on, on projects and topics that come up. When we do things like the, the master plan update or the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update, we do additional community engagement for, for, for those types of things, including surveys, public meetings. When we do road projects, regularly Dan and his staff will go door-to-door to meet with residents, will also hold project updating meetings with, with residents, a lot of times on the site to walk residents through what the plan is for, for that particular road project. And then we also do things like distributing the, the resident handbook. We've done a couple of mass mailings to every home of the resident handbook. We do an annual water quality report that we mailed out to every resident. We do quarterly newsletters that we mailed to every resident. We do informational flyers and tax and assessing bills and if you just got your, got your, you know, notice of assessment, then you will, you, you, there was a flyer included in that. You know, we also have public hearings on different topics, especially when we have a, have an ordinance update or, or something like that. And something that, 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 you know, especially our new members might not know is that we, we do have a YouTube channel where we've posted some, some interesting videos and project-related videos that we've, we've put together. So I don't know if that, that's enough to give us some discussion or if there's anything else you'd like me to cover?
No, I think that, that starts us off well, Justin. So Justin, I, as I read this, and you know, I've seen this in our goal setting a little while, remind me what the difference is or the logic is for the forty-eight news items on the Facebook page versus the twenty-four news items on the city website? Do you remember the derivation of those numbers or why we have different numbers there?
I say, I don't offhand what the, the, the logic behind each of those numbers. Other than we, we, we more than, than, than meet those, I mean, we, we were usually doing email updates of Facebook postings weekly at least. And usually we, we post the same thing, the exact same thing to the website, email update and Facebook.
Gotcha. Okay.
When, when those numbers were first kind of developed, they were really kind of pulled out of the air in some aspects with the thought that Facebook might be more interactive, so there'd be more postings. But as things moved on, it became like Justin said, where things were basically posted in both places.
Okay.
So that way everyone was getting the same information, whether, whether you went to Facebook, received the email update or went to the website.
Gotcha. I, I know that, you know, over the years, we've talked about, you know, having goals and making things measurable, so to speak, or that you could count sometimes. I didn't know if this, you know, not that I'm out there counting that, but we did, we did talk a lot about that at one time, Marie, I think, remember?
Yeah, and that's still in play. That's still a requirement of the GFOA budget award that we have metrics that are measurable as far as achieving our goals.
Okay. So does anybody have any thoughts on what we're missing? What we should do different? Jamie? And then Juan?
Thanks. So we sort of started broaching this topic probably a month ago at a work session and I know there was tension in that conversation, so I want to acknowledge that. And I want to say that, you know, I'm here as somebody who wants to work with council on this. I think as, as most of you know, this is, surveys are my field of study. And the most frequent application has been either in public policy and program evaluation or working with local cities and municipalities. So I have an eye towards that. You know, thinking about that in the context here. So, so keeping that in mind, this is something I could talk about probably for like days, you know, and I know we have two hours here. I know there are lots of people on this call. So I'm trying to think about, you know, what are the few things that I could say that might, you know, get this conversation started, keep it going? Help you understand a little bit more where I'm coming from. You know, you know, I appreciate everything that's been put together in the packet. You know, there is a lot of outreach that's happening and I think that's great and I and sometimes I think what can happen or what I feel like I've been hearing, you know, as I've talked to different people who've either been involved with council currently in the past, that there might often be two different philosophies on what it means or how they envision being an elected official. And it seems like to some people, they see that as people put their confidence in us to, they elected us, they, they trust us to make these decisions and, you know, they've made this decision and now they're going to get on with their lives and, and that's good. They, they trust us to do these things. And then I feel like there's another school of thought and, you know, likely this is a continuum, but I feel like maybe a, a different end of the continuum are elected officials who think I really want to have a, you know, very active, ongoing dialogue with the people I'm elected to represent. Yes, they, you know, voted me into office. But I, I think it's unlike elections at different levels, I don't think really many of us were running on a platform that fully articulated how we would vote on any particular issue that comes up. And so I don't think it's possible for somebody to have voted us in saying, I, I knew how you were going to vote on X, Y, and Z, and that's why I voted you in. So a big part of my platform was, you know, trying to, you know, continue to develop this, this plan for citizen engagement. And and again, I, I think it's I think it's important to, to, as a council member, to talk about sort of what, where on that continuum we fall. I think I definitely fall on the side of I'd like to be soliciting, you know, even more public input to the extent that people, you know, want to be engaging that way. And I think that's an open question. Some people have had the experience, well, they don't come to me, people don't come to meetings, people don't, you know, respond to our surveys or whatever. So, and I think those are fair points. So I think one good place to start is sort of like, where do we fall on that continuum? And, you know, you know, I have some other examples, just things that I've seen in the news recently. So the Washington County Board of Commissioners, they were recently setting their goals and objectives and I think it came to our city council email addresses where they had put out a survey saying, you know, we're working on our goals and objectives, share this widely, we want to hear from the public, what do you want our goals and objectives to be? And I did take a look at it, it was, it was pretty general. You know, maybe they had like general categories, like do you want us to focus on energy? Do you want to focus on roads? You know, but there was at least some effort to say, we're setting goals and objectives, here's this brief survey, we want to hear from you. Celine area, or the Celine School District, this just came out on the Sun Times, they are seeking public input. They have a brief survey put together about their selection of a superintendent. So to me, I'm thinking, okay, you know, we're doing a city manager search. I, I would like to actively solicit input from the public. Donna Lizinski, State Representative Donna Lizinski, I got this mailer from her some time ago. You know, I want to hear from you. What do you value about our community? What improvements would you like to see? What should be the government's priority for Michigan? So here she's one representative at the state level, but she's acting, you know, somewhat independently in her role here locally, asking about, you know, priorities. Again, those are broad education, clean and safe drinking water, fixing roads and bridges, expanding broadband access. But again, there's this outreach I heard to do that. I know Dexter Community Schools has been doing a number of, you know, frequent surveys about return to school and, you know, lots changing with that. They want to hear from the parents. They want to make sure they're getting, you know, feedback. So I mean, I, I think I'll stop there to say that, oh, even, you know, another more local example. So I had shared results, you know, from a survey that I had done, you know, it was never intended to be, it was not intended to be a probability-based or, you know, representative, generalizable survey to the population. I don't think that's something we should be trying to do anyways. It was really, I was just trying to, you know, gather more input and that was a tool I used. It was not intended to be the exemplar of what I think a program could be for us using that particular platform, Polco. I'm happy to put together a presentation on what that might actually look like. I, you know, I did see the City of Ann Arbor has contracted with Polco, that particular platform. They did a survey in November. It was open for a couple of weeks. Again, and that was about their goals and objectives for their budgeting, their upcoming budgeting session or, you know, just like what we're doing here. City of Ann Arbor, use platform Polco. I could say, you know, a few more specifics about that is because I think it would be better if an effort like that were coming from the city as opposed to any particular council member. So I think it's that platform and other platforms, you know, so how Polco generally works is people create an account. It's not something that anybody sees, nobody knows who the responses are coming from on the backend, but the city would, you know, they create their political account. They would try to get as many members in the community to create an account with their email address, et cetera. Based on the information somebody provides, when they create that account, they're then matched to the registered voter database. And I know in the past, when the city has done surveys, either through Survey Monkey or Qualtrics or Google Forms, they, they have usually included a question that says, you know, do you live in the city of Dexter? Do you get a water bill here from us? Because they're really, they're trying to figure out, do people actually live in the city of Dexter or not? Because a lot of people might think that they do, but they don't. Well, so the benefit of Polco is they take some information provided at the time of this account creation and they map you to the registered voter database. So when you get the results on the backend, we don't know who the people are, but we can see the results overall and we can say, okay, who are the people who are successfully matched to the registered voter database? So we have some idea of, are these people coming from actually the city of Dexter? Are they from the surrounding area? Sometimes that might matter, sometimes it might not, but you have that information available. Another benefit then is you have a single platform that you are using to always go out to the public and solicit information. And people who have this account, they'll automatically receive a notification that they're, oh, there's another single question poll up or, oh, there's another long-form survey. So the way, I mean, this is adopted in over five hundred communities in the nation, maybe even more by now. It can be used for something as simple as, we're looking to put together the skating rink. You know, this winter, do you have a preference between Monument Park or Mill Creek North? For example, I know, you know, we experimented with a different location for that. It can be something as I don't, I would say like non-controversial or it's not that it's not serious, but it could be a one-question thing about, you know, where do people think they'd use the skating rink more? Or you can have a long-form survey with multiple questions about our budget priorities and you can have it be more or less involved. So again, I feel like the advantage there is you're creating an account, it's a one-stop shop, you shoot out a single question, people get notified. You can link it to your Facebook account, it shows up, people can click right on it as you create their account. Anyways, I don't want to go into all those details, but just to, to give you a flavor of how that might work, City of Ann Arbor is using it. You know, other government officials are using surveys more regularly. Washington County Board of Commissioners, school districts. I'm not suggesting that again, I feel like the information, you know, you might talk to somebody on the trail, you might talk to your neighbor, you might hear from somebody at a public hearing, you might, you know, somebody might shoot you an email, somebody might, you know, however else people are giving information. I'm not saying this becomes the only, this is the decision-making information, you know, we're making our decision based on what those results are. It's just another way to, I think, formalize what I feel like I've heard is important to everybody, which is, you know, hearing what the community wants and thinks. And if you put it all in one location, that might help just formalize it. So I said a lot, there's a whole lot more I could say. I'll just leave it at that for now and, and hear what other people think.
Why? Did you want to go next?
I mean, I guess, I, I will say that I agree it's a continuum and I think using the phrase to formalize it is a little bit problematic for me because of the fact that we can't formalize something that's going to be a small fraction of the community. And as we've said, it's a continuum, so there are people who are never going to take a survey and their voices are just as important. Away from all of that, my, my, one of my things that I want to try to figure out how to do is try to get more people to the culture that we hold. You know, I, I know people can't always show up to the meeting, but if we have this type of access, it is easier. And I think a lot of times that is just a lack of knowledge that is happening. I don't know how we as council do that, but I know in a town this size, and I know from, you know, doing a campaign when I couldn't go door-to-door, using the phone and using word of mouth really works in a town this size. And so I don't know if there's something there or if other people have ideas or other people think that that's something they'd like to try to work on too, but for me, that's a big thing.
Julie, Paul, any thoughts? Good morning, Paul.
Morning, everyone. Well, I get surveys all the time. I think we, many of us do, if you belong to any organizations, whether it's the Watershed Council or whether it's a political party, you get surveys, okay? And they, 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 they they vary in length and size and I, I, I'm not nearly as sophisticated as Jamie is to, to understand it all. I, I was the one that called her. I want to understand a little bit more about what that company did and how it worked. And if there's five hundred communities in the U.S. that are using it, I guess one of the things I'd like to know is how many are approximately the size of ours. I'll go up even to, you know, ten thousand people in a community. We're not there, but we're, we're larger than, than slightly over five, I guess, here. So I, I would like to know that first and, and then I, then I want to know when Ann Arbor did it, you know, I think we have to be as well as the county itself using it. It's all based on political parties and elections here. It's Republican, Democrat thing. And the county's that way. Every, every county commissioner is a Democrat now. I think most of the, all the Ann Arbor council people are Democrats now. And so when you do that, do you, do people take a look at that and say, oh, I'm not going to answer that survey because it's political. Now, we're not that way. We used to be. We're not that way anymore. So I don't know how people react to those things. How many people fill out the surveys? I know that both the county commission and Ann Arbor, you can get it online. And it's cable in Ann Arbor. You know, you can click on that, you can see the planning commission and it's, it's a there are meetings there, standing with council meetings. We don't have anything like that. I think we had something like that that people could somehow react and see something and have the opportunity to do that. They have more opportunity that when they did want to fill out a survey that we sent them, they'd have more information. But racking that it, to me is a question of what base of information does a person have to fill out a survey? And an example that Jamie and I are not criticizing for this because it was a discussion of where the ice rink would be is that we put it in Maya Park because we thought that was a center part of the town. It was visible and people could, could easily see that we had an ice rink. But because of the land itself, it was eleven inches higher in one spot than the other and therefore it never froze very often. And when it did freeze and then thawed, it was impossible almost to have it refrozen again. So we chose another site to make it more usable for everybody. And so if I put that to the public, they said, well, you took it away from where people would see it. You hid it behind a fire hall and down here and over the area. Well, that, that was never on ten. Our intent was to be able to have it more useful for everybody. So I guess we need to think about how, to me, I need to know how these surveys are devised and how they could help out in, in answering questions. And I, I, I'm willing to do anything. I know surveys, I guess, surveys and I fill them out, some of them, and some of them, I just still think that they're, they're, they're written well for me to give my information that they don't have programmed what they're going to do anyway. And I guess that's what I believe in the, in the Democratic Party there in, in in Ann Arbor more than the county commission. I think the county commissioners are really a little bit more open for real input. But in the city of Ann Arbor, they're pretty well just locked in of what they want to want to believe in a lot of these things anyway, whether it's budget or, or their emphasis on what project they want to, whether it's a social project or not. So I guess to summarize that, if I can, you know, I'm willing to look at anything and give it a shot. If I think it can fit in to our community, the size that it is and somehow give people information, what do you think about this? If they don't have any background of what this is, is always hard for me. Where I until the last you know, few months, I think with, well, months, months with COVID, you know, you know, I, I spent a lot of time in the coffee shop down there and, and the donut at the bakery and listen to people there. They come in and they talk to you. And that's where I get a lot of my information for talking to people on the street, when you're walking, when you're talking, or you're in a meeting with somebody else, whether it's a senior senator or what, I try to get my information that way. I realize it's not maybe exactly, you know, to fit all the norms of surveys, but I, I tried to do that. I've tried to do that all my life. And yet I know I can't get everybody, you know, I can't go to every door and ask them what they feel about this, explain it and then come back. So maybe I'm making it too big or too cumbersome. But I think when you have a cable network like Ann Arbor has, people can listen, they can find out what the basic issues are. And then when a survey comes to them, they have a background of what they can talk about. And the same thing with the county now as well. You, it's online. If you want to get it, you can look at it there. Ours is not descriptive and I hope that if we make the decision to go down to to, to Huron Street and Broad there, that we have an ability to broadcast our meetings, planning commission, city, any other ones that we feel that we want to to the public. So they'll have it and we will have a network there. It's one of the things I just wrote down of a couple of other things that I I hope that we would examine before we made the purchase of the building to see if we're going to be able to do that and what that cost would be.
I'm not sure whose hand went up. Michelle, did your hand up or were you just setting the chat in? I know you're not supposed to talk. That's why I'm not sure if I'm calling on you or not. I know you're muted.
I raised my hand so you know that I've typed something in the chat for you to share.
Okay. Why? Back to you.
Yeah, Paul, I'm really glad that you brought up the point about people having the information to, you know, weigh in a survey. And I'm not, I'm not anti-survey. I don't want to come across as that. I just think that, yeah, Paul, you raise a lot of good points and we have to be careful about what we are using them for because we don't want people answering questions when they don't have all the information and then coming back at us and saying, well, why didn't you listen to me when there were clearly reasons why we couldn't do and then coming back at us and saying, well, why didn't you listen to me when there were clearly reasons why we couldn't do what they were asking us to do, like practical reasons. So I guess with that in mind, my focus would want to be on a way to, and again, Paul, I agree with this, on a way to make sure that we can continue this type of access for the community because that does enable them to then answer these questions to be made, put out to them in a survey in a more informed and helpful manner. And meaningful, meaningful for them, helpful for us, and just all around, I think, more impactful.
Jamie?
Thanks. Yeah. So on this, so I did, Michelle had asked in the chat for a link to the, to the platform. I'm able to send it to her directly. I'm not able to email it to send it to everybody in the chat. And again, like I said, I'm happy to put together something more formal at an actual council meeting or a different work session. I'm not, I don't, I wouldn't imagine that we could work through every single detail on this call. I'm thinking this is like brainstorming, what questions people have, that sort of thing. You know, to the questions about, you know, people having background information, I think that's entirely relevant. One of the things I did when I was at the University of Nebraska Public Policy Center in the city of Lincoln, they collaborated directly with the city of Lincoln and they had a two-year budgeting cycle. This is not something I would necessarily propose doing, but they kind of came from a school of a thought called deliberative polling. And their thinking was you do this quick one-off survey, you ask, you know, ask people on the phone, what do they think about these budget priorities? They're maybe not thinking through, maybe they don't know like the whole range of things they, they could be thinking about. And so they'll just give you their top of mind response and that might not be the, the most helpful input. So they would do these day-long sessions where they, they would start with a random digitale telephone survey, meaning, you know, they've got their outer space sample frame. They know everybody who lives in the city. They do a random selection. They, they then ask some initial questions on the phone. They recruit people to the event. They have a stay-along event where they have different stakeholders talking about different aspects of the budget. So they'd have Dan speaking about public works and saying, here's all the things we're thinking about. And that would, you know, and then they'd have follow-up questions. So they'd do a survey at the beginning and a survey at the end. But they were hoping by hearing directly from the city staff or, you know, other people who are helping coordinate the city, the different city projects and departments, they would hear directly from them and, and have greater context for the perspective that they were sharing. So instead of somebody, you know, if you might just ask over the phone, do you want us to plow after four inches of snow or six inches of snow? Do you want us to let the grass in the city park grow this tall? Like, do you want everything mowed all the time? Or are you okay if some parts of parks, we, you know, let the grass grow longer? They could then hear from the people who, who do that work to understand like, what's the give and take here? What, what does that actually involve? Again, those were in-person day-long events. And I think those things, you know, I actually wrote an academic paper about it, how you're still going to have selection effects, you know, like anything. You're going to have a selection effect. Who is willing to come to a public hearing? Who's willing to email city council? You know, yeah, who's willing to take a survey? There, there are going to be selection effects for any and all of these things. And yeah, there's no one single method that I think is going to, you know, quote, get you the truth or be the best thing. So I think it's, you know, developing a, a program of all of these things, you know, to the point about the base of information, you know, one aspect of POCO is that there, you can have links embedded into it that then take the respondent to either a picture of what you're talking about, some background document or something. So you can incorporate as much background information to individual questions as you want, that respondents are then able to access as they're completing it. So that can help. You know, I, I agree with all the points about broadcasting these meetings. You know, one thing, we have all these Zoom recordings right now. We have them all. Seems to me it would be very easy to upload them. I, I don't know. I'm not a tech person. It would be simple and straight, you know, simple to imagine that we could get these online right now. We don't need to wait for a new building. We don't need to wait for, you know, broadcast television. We have these recordings right now. I know we've mentioned that there is a member of the public who I, you know, I think Cole, Cole is on the call, who records these to a separate YouTube channel, but that is irregularly and infrequently updated. So if somebody wants timely information about what has happened at a meeting that's already happened, those recordings are not being uploaded in any timely fashion. And it, you know, if we have the capability to do that with city staff, the city staff, I don't, again, I don't know what that would involve. I, I would think it's adding another hyperlink to the website to this video location. I feel like that's something we could look into right now. If it's important to people, I feel like we could do it. It won't, and I don't think it would take time. And I'd be, you know, I'd be happy to have that there. And there were a couple of other things. Yeah, recording. Yeah, yeah. I think that's just the point I wanted to make there. In terms of, you know, other things that were in the packet. I have had that thought about coordinating regular, well, coordinating regular meetings with Dexter Community Schools, I guess is different than what I was thinking, which is there are times where our meetings overlap with the, the school board meeting. And I've had a number of people say, oh, I'm, you know, which meeting am I going to tonight? Or there are important things happening at both meetings. And I thought, oh, that would be, that'd be great if we could sort of get off schedule from them. But then I was realizing, well, the school district is, is more than the city of Dexter in terms of municipalities. So it's coordinating with, you know, the other townships. And when their meetings aren't, I guess that's maybe a bigger ask. I guess something else I just wanted to throw out there. So Michelle also just sent a, a bit more additional information in the chat if people are interested in looking at it.
Wow, back to you, I think.
Thanks. You know, I, Jamie, I really, I, I have also worked, you know, in larger governments like you're describing. As, as we know, at the state level, I've said many times, but I would love it if, when we continue this discussion, if you do come back with more, you know, like detailed information, if like Paul said, it's more right-sized for our community because all of these examples that you're bringing up are, they're awesome. Like those are great programs. But I'm just wondering what's happening in communities our size right now. And I guess that's it.
Julie, anything to add?
Sure. Thank you, Sean. Yeah, we are a public body. We're here, we're elected by the public. And I think everything we do, every meeting we have, every, all the information we have should be available to the public. And I think we do a good job through Facebook, our webpage, emails. And I'm going to use the quote that, you know, you could, well, how's that go? Take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I mean, if people aren't interested, no matter how many surveys we send out or how, no matter what we do, they're just not going to be interested. So I, I think we do a good job. And I'm sure, I'm sure expanding on our programs would be good. But again, as far as surveys, most of the surveys I get either in the mail or even online, I just delete or throw them in the trash. And I don't know how much response we would get to those. And even the response we do get, we, we can't always make decisions based on those responses because only a certain percentage of the people are going to respond. So there's always going to be someone that has an opposing opinion.
I'll, I'll always, or Dan, go ahead, Dan. Did Dan just start to say something? I, I would say that, you know, I am willing to try anything. And I've always believed that more information is better than less. But we, I think I mentioned it when we were talking before that, and I've mentioned many times in council meetings, what could be more important to a citizen than how the city, former really spends its money? And it's clear that we've had public hearings before every one of the budgets with discussion at council meetings before that. And yet I think that I can count on one finger, maybe two, anybody that ever has come to a council meeting to discuss a budget in, in the city, village of Dexter in the last 20 years. And that's either, we always kind of joked about it, laughed about it, it's either because we're just doing a phenomenal job or they just don't care. And I don't know which one it is. I like to think it's, I'd like to think it's the, the former, and we're doing a good job and people are satisfied that we have it. But if, if we are going to, you know, I, I don't want to put Dan in a situation or anybody in some of these areas here saying, well, you know, we, we have a, 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 a street here. And people say, well, how do they get theirs fixed and we didn't? And we can, we can tell them about the, the PISA ratings and all of that. But if they drive up and down, they think that those streets being shorted, they're going to be upset about it. And yet that's just the way sometimes things are, okay? But, but I will, I will try anything and I will be more happy to participate in any development of a survey that I think would be valuable for us. Or I, I'd like to know, as Wa said, what the size of the community is. I don't, I don't know how big Lincoln, Nebraska is. I assume it's over 50,000 people. But I would also know how many people returned those surveys. And, and how many people were engaged in that in a broad spectrum? Or was it just the people that carp and drive about everything? I don't know. So I, I certainly, we want to try anything.
Jamie, why don't you, you have your hand up? And then I'd like to make a couple of comments. So go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I just want to follow back. I did share a link with Michelle because I, yeah, I'm not able to share with everybody. So then she passed it on to everybody in the chat to a city called Bar Harbor, Maine. And they're about 5,000, a quaint town of about 5,000, it says, kind of a bit of a touristy town. And there's an article here on the POCO website talking about how they, they've used POCO. So there's an example, small town like ours, maybe.
I'd like to, I'd like to see that, Jamie. I really would. I've been, I've been in Bar Harbor and I, if, if they're talking anymore, any, anything else about, about the beauty of that town and the, and the opportunity to take a trip out to the ocean with the, the US service there. My kids went on that lobster fishing and their lobster, it was, we had a phenomenal weekend up there, but it's, yeah. I, but I don't remember how big the town was.
Yeah, yeah. And I can, yeah, more, I can put something together. You know, I do want to say, so I have done a very small amount of consulting work with POCO in the past. Nothing in the previous fiscal year, nothing that amounted to even more than a thousand dollars in a single year. It's been questionnaire design support as they've been, you know, working with communities, they wanted input on, you know, how do we best word this question, that sort of a thing. In terms of cost, I mean, there could be a, a zero cost upstart for the city here. There's a, there's a freemium version where, you know, you don't have to pay for any add-ons or anything like that. It's something the city could implement at, at no cost. I, I can put together more information, you know, I don't want this to make this seem like I'm trying to push a platform that I had a prior relationship with. Because as you know, I, I am very concerned about real and perceived conflicts of interest. There are other platforms. I'm happy to consider them. There's something called Open Town Hall. This is a platform I'm familiar with because of my past relationship with them. Again, I haven't, you know, I've had no financial compensation from them for over a year. So I want to put that out there. In terms of, you know, why do people come to, to me? Oh, so, and you know, another option is to invite a representative from POCO out, you know, via Zoom or something, you know, during the, you know, pre-arranged participation. Maybe they put together a 10-minute thing. I don't know. I, I can do it. We could reach out to them. In terms of people coming to meetings or not, you know, I feel, you know, one perspective is you may, we need to meet people where they are at. If they're not at our meetings, where are they? They're sitting on Facebook, talking about things or, you know, you know, so I feel like, you know, some of them are online, talking about things. And that's one benefit of an online platform. Again, it's not, you're not going to cover everybody. So I guess I see the, why aren't people coming to our meetings? The conclusion of that may be somewhat differently than you do. I don't, I don't think it's that people don't care. I think it's potentially they don't know. And, you know, another, you know, benefit downside of a community of this size is how interconnected people are and how comfortable people feel potentially challenging a decision they don't like. Do they own a business in town? Is their spouse on a border commission? Have they themselves been on a border commission in the past? Are they looking to make a change to their property that they think they're speaking up is going to have a negative effect on? You know, in terms of, you know, we talked in the past about the value of anonymous feedback and, and making that as an option. I don't know how many people were following what happened at the University of Michigan with their former provost and the sexual, like, I don't know, sexual assault, sexual harassment scandal. The, you know, that provost is gone. And in Mark Schlissel's report, the president of the university's report, they had an independent investigation about all of that. And the, you know, he admitted that one of the places that one of the victims came forward was in an open-ended response to an anonymous survey. And Mark Schlissel admitted that, you know, he missed that, that was missed. That there were a lot of these red flags or, you know, sort of reports that people were hearing in different areas and nobody, you know, quite took them seriously enough. So all that to say that I think, you know, if you get to the more, you know, controversial aspect of things, when, you know, when there are concerns about trust and confidence with an institution, the institution can set up their own mechanisms for reporting those concerns. I think it's unlikely that if somebody already is concerned about, if somebody already has concerns about, you know, or low confidence or low trust in the institution, how likely is it that they're then going to trust this mechanism that they've put up? Or if they have to put their name to it? So I, I feel like there's, there's value to the anonymous feedback. I think there's value in not having somebody have to put their face and name and address to something. You know, I, can you, do you get a whole bunch of extra when you open the door to that? Probably. But, you know, maybe there's going to be something there that's valuable, like they found at the University of Michigan, a victim coming forward, reporting something who only felt comfortable doing it on that platform. So sorry to leave it on not such a happy note, but that's all I'll say for now. Thanks.
I'll try to turn it back to happy, Jamie.
Yeah, sorry.
You all have created a lot of thought-provoking ideas, I guess. You know, I, I'm, I was trying to remember the book that I read several years ago. I should go back and find it. I think it was called like either 12 or 13 Ways to Kill a Community. And might even have been written by somebody with your last name, Jamie, somebody Griffin, I think. Not you, not you and not. But, but one of the, one of the chapters in there was talking about either whether to approve, improve the community water supply or not improve the community water supply or something like that. And they were talking about the factions of people that came out to talk about that issue. And they were explaining that there were either three or four different groups. One, the ones that stuck in my mind, there's the, there was the group of people that were interested in getting something either done or changed. And then there was the group that was interested in no change. They didn't want anything. And then the group that's the naysayers, or, or not the naysayers, the, the, yeah, sort of the, the people that didn't say anything, naysayers, I guess. They didn't, they don't, they just are out there. And the, what I remember, I gotta go back and find it and read it again because it made me think about it. But the, what I got out of it is that you can get value out of all three segments of that population, all three groups. You know, the, the group that wants the change, for example, the people on Bristol that came to us and said, hey, our street is awful. Okay, they, they want an improvement. And there might be a group that, you know, doesn't want that. I don't know. We didn't see that group in that example. And then there's, you know, the people that have lived on Bristol for 20 years and have never said anything. And I guess, I guess, like I said, you guys have made me think about some things. And, you know, there's value from all of the different groups that it, I, I don't know the best way to reach all of those groups. I, I think Julie's comment about you can bring a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, you know, is, is fitting in a lot of ways. You know, back in 2008, You know, is is fitting in a lot of ways, uh, you know, back in two thousand and eight. Paul, you and I might be the only ones that were on council at that time together.
Don't don't lump my age with yours, I'm a little older there, buddy.
Hey, pal, we'll average it out, how's that sound?
Okay.
Uh, but, well, well, no, we, you know, we didn't, there was a, there was a time, I think it was two thousand and eight, there was a time when. We didn't even have our email listserv.
Right.
Okay, a- and and, you know, we, for for, so I got, I was elected first in two thousand and four. And not that email was new then, or that a listserv concept was new, but we didn't have one. And when um. When I uh. Got appointed to take over for Jim Seda as village president, one of the goal-setting sessions that came after that. We came up with starting that. That mechanism as a way, you know, the thought was that most people have an email. Some may use it, some may check it daily, some, some carry their phone in their pocket, okay, that's me, I've got it. Now mine doesn't buzz or beep or do any of that stuff, because that drives me nuts. Yep, Jamie, you've got yours, you know, so, but I I don't, I don't have mine on, but I, if I'm, you know. Sometimes on the trail, I'll pull it out, glance to see if I got an email. If I'm sitting having breakfast alone, I might have an email, if I'm with somebody, I don't look at my phone, I don't want to look at my phone. I personally, anyway, where where am I, where am I going with all that? I think. I think the first part of a survey, and I don't know that anybody covered this yet. Is there has to be a topic that you're interested in getting information on. Okay, to to me, to me. General. Surveys. You know, hey, how are we doing, or what can we do better? Typically, typically, you only get the people that want to bitch. Okay, now, now that may, maybe that's the point, maybe that's the point. But it doesn't, and and there could be value in one data point, you know, one comment about something. Ultimately. The power of any information is how we think about it and use it and make an assessment. What we were elected to do was. Take any information that we're, we have related to the community, I think. And think about it and decide whether we use that information to make us better or not. Um, Justin, how many people are, do you know how many people are on our email update? I I know that, I know that's not going to be like. I total is what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Limited to just the city people.
Correct, yes, so 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 we actually have different, different groups, so. Uh, I I just the generals to the email where we would send, you know, the the weekly email update. Um, we have about twenty eight hundred. Um, we also have like a separate group for like Aint Dexter, um, we have a subgroup for the industrial park. Um, so when we have information for those groups, we send that out separate.
Okay, but twenty eight hundred people. And, you know, if you, if you took the population of. The city and. Webster, Dexter and CIO. You're probably in the. What, thirty thousand range? Am I low?
Maybe close, yeah.
I'm, you know, you know, so.
Now, for sure.
You know, one, one, one email could represent more than one person, because uh. If a household gets the email, you know, there could be two or three or four people in the household, so. One email doesn't just mean one person is is understanding the information. But that wa- that was a stepping stone, as I think back, I mean, that was, that was the first effort to. To get people to sign up. Now, every newsletter we've sent out since we started that, I think, or almost every newsletter. Has offered people a chance to sign up. Okay, I I would bet, I would, you know, sure as everybody's got a social security number. I would bet just about everybody's got an email in today's world, or at least. Even kids in school have them now. So. You know, no matter what tool we use, I think the, the point I'm trying to make is not everybody's going to sign up, not everybody's going to want to use it. And. I'm okay with, you know, if we want to explore expanding whatever our program is considered to be, Justin put it on two pages. But to me, it comes back to, you know, the topic, I don't think you just continuously ping. What can we do better? What can we do better? What can we do better? You know, why don't we ask the question, what are we doing great? Nobody ever asked that question. Why would we ask that question? You know, but but there's probably value in it, what if nobody answers that question? Does that mean we're doing nothing great? Well, I I'm just, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, you're right. It depends on what the issues are, Sean, you know, somebody who lives on a street that's just been paved, they're not even going to answer that question. You know, about your streets, whether it's good or not, okay, because they've just seen it, okay, they're they're not going to answer that, you know. Uh, does anybody in this town, have you heard anybody say yet? What you've done with this, with the stoplights and making the left-hand turn. Flashing there is a good thing, and it moves traffic better.
I said it before I was elected, because I hate, I hated getting stuck there, I'm so happy about that.
And 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 my point is, it's, it's, it it has, it's worked, but I don't think. Anybody would say on a survey, well, they may, on a survey, that they liked it, but they're not going to come up to you and, you know, in a coffee shop, say, that's a great idea. You did it, it's great, you move on with life, okay, you guys did the right thing there, okay? I mean, how many times did we say, you hear people say, those two roundabouts out there on Baker Road are going to be a disaster. They're going to be a nightmare, there's going to be accidents all the time, those kids will come, we don't have school, they don't have to stop, what do you mean? And yet, that's worked well, we got traffic moving better there. Maybe we need to put more on there, but the point is, is that when you do something good, sometimes people just don't tell you about it. Because they agree with it and they saw it happen. And uh.
So, so Paul, let me just, let me just finish one, one thought there. So I'm, I'm open to learning about any platform. Jamie, if if you want to get, bring some information and share it, I'm all in for learning about stuff, I, I was not familiar with it. I didn't take your survey. You know, I'm I'm open to learning what what tools are available, should we need to have a tool. I'm, I guess I'm. I'm, what I'm happy about, at least, this is my perception, is. I think that we're all very accessible to the public. Okay, whether it's people that live in town, or people that own businesses in town, or people that live outside of town and call Dexter their own town. Because there's a lot of people that live outside the town, that this is their town too. But I think we're accessible, and I think that that is a really, really important part of of, of this whole. Process. People can find us. And and typically, it's been my experience, um, I haven't been on council as long as Paul, but. If somebody has a concern. That they call. Or they they write, now, now, maybe at the level that, Jamie, you talked about, you know, U of M with the. Abuse there, um, you know, that's an awful topic, and, you know, I I'm not sure. How that exactly fits into what we're, I don't think that's, that's a. Different thing there, but I mean, I would hope that anybody that was in a problematic problem wouldn't have a problem reaching out to anybody for help if they needed it. You know, that that situation was out there, but. We are accessible, I think, and that, that's a really important trait to be able to say, and, and I think we're living up to that. Uh, I also am supportive of the video. Or the, the, you know, making sure that that people can participate in this way if we can. We did mention that or tried to mention that yesterday when uh, we were at thirty five fifteen Broad. To uh, the architect, Justin, didn't we talk about that?
Did, yeah, we we talked about making sure that there, that um, the council chamber is is set up for tech. You know, having, having monitors and um, space for projector and or camera. They may, making sure that that it's outfitted appropriately for, for our techniques.
And and we'd have those costs, you know, that we'd have those costs no matter where we chose to go, hopefully, you know, I I mean, that, that's not a. That's not a address-specific.
No.
Goal or or cost or number that we might see come back from somebody, you know, on an evaluation that. We're probably, if we're, if we want that, we're going to have that, whether we were at the, you know. You, you understand what I'm saying? Um, I just want, let me just say one thing, we keep going on this topic, it is ten o'clock. We have one more planned topic and then open discussion, do we want to keep going on? This, or are there points that didn't get made? Michelle has her hand up, that might mean there's still a chat that I haven't read yet.
Yeah, she shared the link to um, Kill Your Community.
Always to kill your community, who was the author?
Todd Griffiths.
Griffith.
Oh, I was close, right, sorry, I I can't remember everything I read or whatever, so, okay, close. Uh, Alex?
Um, yeah, after his time, really quickly, I just wanted to touch on ways to potentially increase um, involvement with the youth, if we, if we have the time, of course.
Oh, sure, sure, throw it out there.
Uh, sure, so, um, I believe in January at one of our goal sessions that we discussed potentially, um. What we could do to increase collaboration with the schools, um, and so I I just really think that. We should explore any options available, maybe the um, school newspaper, they send out emails occasionally to students, just so that we can um, really get. More youth opinions, because I feel like students do generally really like to give their opinion, and I I think in many cases, they are potentially. More willing than mi- I, maybe other citizens, because they feel so valued when they're asked for their opinion. And I I think that could be a very valuable resource for the city.
Thank you for that. Uh, Wa?
I just want to follow up on that, because I know Donna and I were supposed to be putting something together, and so Donna and I had touched on it a couple of times, and then. I mean, we all know where that is right now, so if everybody's okay with it, I, I mean, I'd be happy to meet with Alex. And put together some ideas, if that's all right.
It's absolutely okay with me, um, I know that, I know Donna had said she had.
Sorry, yeah, Bella too, sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna also add to Alex saying that we could also like expand in social media that, um. Younger children are like more likely to use like Instagram, because I know we have a Facebook account, and um, I know Michelle's very active on it. And I see some other people active on Facebook, but I don't really see like. Um, social media that is like presented towards teenagers being used that often, so I think that's something that we could tap into also.
We, you mean that, we have to get to TikTok now?
Yeah.
TikTok, Snapchat.
You're lucky to know what that is, okay, not that I really do know what it is, okay, but.
Yeah, is that letter writing?
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a clock company that tries to fix your watch, it's TikTok.
So, so actually, uh, th- there's a new show um, called Mr. Mayor.
It's hilarious.
With 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 Ted Danson, and they they actually did a a little thing with with TikTok where where they're trying to spread information. Uh, to residents through TikTok, and they're creating ridiculous videos that. Don't, don't really share any information.
Has everybody seen that show? Anybody seen that show?
I see it advertised, but I haven't watched it.
You should, you should, ab- absolutely should absolutely try to watch the first couple of three, the the character selection is. Funny to me, very, very well done. I mean, I mean, if you like a sitcom, and there were years where there wasn't a good sitcom out there, and this seems to be a decent one, maybe the topic is too close to me, but. Well, well, what's funny about it is, what's funny about it, if I can digress for a second, is he he is the elected mayor of Los Angeles.
Oh.
Okay, well, and one time, one time in my elected career here in in Dexter. One of our residents compared us to the city of Los Angeles.
Yes, they did.
They could, they, they compared us to Los Angeles, and my jaw just dropped, I, of all the places in the world. I could not get around that comparison, it took me years to, obviously, there's, you know, diversity of people, and we all breathe air and all that stuff, but. I was like, that couldn't, if you were going to pick any city in the world, that would have been the furthest one I would have picked to compare to Dexter, but. But she did, um, so that's, that's another thing that makes me laugh when I watch that show, but um.
So Sean, just real quick, Michelle did have another uh, uh, comment in chat.
Okay, go ahead and read it, if you would, please.
Sure, um, final thought, uh, community outreach is an ongoing process, especially in a community like Dexter, which is growing, i.e. New residents, and one which has a larger footprint than its boundary limits.
Yep. Good point. Shall we move on to topic two? Does that sound okay, or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so just, just in terms of of action items, so we're, I mean, we don't make decisions in these meetings, but so that we keep the progress going. Jamie, you're gonna get a little more information to everybody on, on that, or do you want us just to use the link?
I'm happy to put something together, do you want something that is like a one pager for a packet, do you want me just to email the group? Do you, I don't know what makes the most sense, do you want me to invite someone from Polco to come talk?
Do I, no, why don't you, why don't you put together just more of an explanation of of it? Since, since we, since a couple of our council members are not here.
Yeah.
Let's get every, I want to make sure that everybody gets up to speed on the same thing before we move too far. Forward without the other two, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
Why don't you do the informational thing, and between you and Justin, you can figure out how you want to get it out, or if you want to put it in the packet as a, as a suggestion, I'm, I'm okay either way with that, so.
Okay, I can do that, yep, thank you.
Yep, okay, and then, and then while you're gonna um, work with Alex and Bella and uh. And if, and Donna, obviously, if appropriate, because you're already working with Donna, so.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good, good, thank you for that. Where are we at next? Sale of equipment, right, Justin?
Yep.
Okay, I'll let you do an introduction again, uh, on this topic, please.
Sure, so, so a couple of meetings ago, we um, City Council approved the, the purchase of a uh, a truck for the EPW. Um, but the, the question came up, you know, what, what do we do with the old truck? Um, you know, the, the question came up, you know, can we trade it in, you know, what, what, what can we do with it? Um, so I I posed the question to uh, the city attorney, and um, he believes that there's, there's a distinction between. Uh, sale and bartering. Um, sale, uh, the, the language of of of, you know, property being for sale, um, was included in in the charter amendment. Um, but the, the, the term bartering is not, and um, the city attorney thinks that uh. The trading in of a truck would fall under, under the concept of bartering, which um, would be allowed. Uh, under the charter, um, if city council wanted to interpret the, the charter language that way. But with, with that being said, otherwise, um, if if we were to try and sell equipment, we would have to put it um, in front of. Uh, the public for a vote. And the next regularly scheduled election is August twenty two. Uh, but there is also um. Language that is uh, state law that would allow city council to um, propose a charter amendment if it, if it wanted to. Um, by resolution of three fifths of of city council membership. So I think we, we just wanted to get some, some direction from council on what you would like us to do with. With our old equipment, rather than having it rust out in the yard.
But, so Justin, if if, I want to ask a question about the last sentence you just said, the, the per state law, city council has the authority, I'm just reading. To propose a charter amendment. Through a resolution of three fifths of its membership.
Mm-hmm.
And I did not read the MCL, I'll go look at that, um, but. Does it follow the same process? I mean, if if we, if we did that. Then it would be put on the next general election or the next available election or whatever the.
Next, yeah, next, next, next general election.
Got it, okay. So, one, one, I guess I have another question then, really. So, what, what, I guess I have another question then related to the paragraph above with the bargained. I always love it when an attorney gets involved with the, uh, wording thing. So, could we trade in one piece of property for another?
That's, that's a good question. Um.
In the same, in the, I, I'm not trying to really stir the pot, but I guess I'm, like, 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 let, let, let's say, let's say, um, I don't even know what a good example would be, but you know, let's say there, that somebody wanted to swap property for the 30, 45 broad property. I don't know who that would be in the city because there's not a lot of available land to swap, but I mean, is, is, is swap an official legal term that's the same as bargained? Because I, I mean, I, that's really what you're doing. You're trading in. Bartering is, I mean, you're. Anyway, I just throw that out there to drive up our legal bills.
No, 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 not that we don't have enough of those.
So Sean, so I can clarify where you're trying to go there. 30, 45 um, is the Dapco site, right? The old Dapco site?
Yes.
And so your conjecture was that if we wanted to trade that to somebody that would have a piece of land, we would swap it or trade to me means not necessarily have money exchanged, okay? Just, I'm trading, trading my my old car and I'm getting a discount on something else, or I'm trading it equal for equal.
Is that? Yeah, I'm, Paul, this is new. I, you know, until I read this, uh, yesterday, you know, I, I, I'm, I mean, sale to me, you know, is one person is selling something to the other and receiving some compensation in return.
And could be, could be a used car, correct?
Could be. Yeah, yeah. Well, and I, I'm sorry, in, in this case, I know Justin is talking about, you know, the, the truck. I mean, and, and it makes sense. We, we get a new truck, you know, we all, we've all done this with our own personal vehicles or probably, you know, you, you, you say, I need a new vehicle and you don't need your old one. So you, you tell the dealership, hey, if I trade that in, and they'll say, yeah, we'll give you 1,200 or we'll give you two grand or we'll give you whatever, depending on how new or old it is. We've all done that or I think are all familiar with that, that trade in.
Yep.
That's what he's calling bargained. That's what, uh, uh, he's calling that bargained, right, Justin?
Correct.
And what, what, what we're saying historically here is that we, we used to barter, but we figured out that we didn't get as much value as if we went on whatever that website is over there.
Dog deals.
Dog deals, thanks. Yeah, you know, that if we auctioned it and ended up selling it, we could get better value for the same item. But I mean, what, 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 what it is, is, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a form of cash is what it is. Cause you're, I mean, you're using the item as a form of cash to get something.
Understand it. So just clarify me on.
Oh. And it got me thinking, all I'm getting at is it got me thinking that if you can, if you could do that with a, with a truck where you offer the truck as partial compensation for something else. If you take the word truck out of the sentence and put land in there, you could do a swap too.
As a barter, you're saying?
I, I, I just, you know, now and now, land and truck now and now, and all I did is, you know.
Yeah, I got it. I.
Well, and, and the reason I, the reason I'm bringing that up and, and Jamie, just give me one second to throw that rest out here. You know, because the whole topic of this thing was over land. The whole issue, the whole issue was of this amendment was, was over the sale of land. And the, and the either trust or lack of trust or whatever on it. And it got expanded in the language from real property to, it, it didn't have a, it didn't have a delineation of property, didn't have an adjective. Until we tried to expand it and, and then, you know, we've, we've voted to put it in this situation. So that's where I'm, that's why I'm tying that back in, so.
I, I got it. I, I guess to me, there are distinct differences of trading um, a truck in, what you call a trade in or barter in, whatever you want to call it, and a piece of land, because that's what the uh, that, that's what the vote the last time was, was based upon land and it could be based upon land in the future. Uh, you know, uh, 30. Uh.
Well, the vote, the vote was on everything, Paul. I mean, we.
I know, I know it was on everything, but it was inclusive that, but I don't think they included it to be that, okay? They, it just happened to capture everything when they said it, when I said it in there. I think they, I think I've heard from people that they didn't think that was what they were trying to do originally, you know, it was on land. And to me, that's a distinction, okay? Um, I, I guess I support the concept that there should be a vote of the people on land. I, I've got, I've, I've come to that conclusion. After all this, it's gone off, okay? And as it relates to parks or the Dapco site or anything there, I, I guess I've come, come to that myself. Now, I, I could be changed or swayed if, if somebody comes up with a good argument, but to me, this is just a matter of, if the word barter will satisfy everybody and not raise red flags. Uh, unless you know, but the people that put that on the ballot and, and, and then passed it. Um, I, I'm willing to look at, uh, go ahead and put it on the next ballot so we can clarify that with people. It just didn't, the, the information didn't get across. And those that had the few signs out that didn't want it to pass, they, they just, they didn't, they didn't do a good job out there either, so. Uh, clarified as much as it could have been, but that said, I, I just think there's a difference between a piece of land being sold and a chipper or an old truck.
Yeah, I think there should be too. Jamie, and then Dan?
Yeah. Um, right, yeah, I think the point, uh, Mayor Q, that it seems like you're trying to make or, that I'm referring, you're trying to make is I, I feel like we'd want to be careful that what we're doing isn't then opening the door to something that we don't want to be doing. I don't know if anybody's paying attention to what's happening in the, again, this is maybe a more serious example and so not the best analogy, but what's, what's happening with the Chelsea City, City Council and, uh, the protesters and the charges being dismissed or not being dismissed. And I was reading an article about how maybe the way they were dismissed now maybe opens the door to future action that they maybe don't support, even if they supported the current action. So, you know, I think your point is a fair one. If, you know, if we open the door to say, oh, well, we're going to interpret this, you know, bartering is okay here. Does that open the door for bartering, bartering with public, you know, real property in the future? And is that, you know, if it does, is that something that people are, are, are okay with? Um, you know, to the point about, you know, the revision to the charter amendment, yeah, I sent out a one pager or three pager, I guess, that came out from the Michigan Municipal League. Talks about the process in general. I sent a link to Justin via the chat. It, it says, "A proposed charter amendment defeated in an election may not be resubmitted for a period of two years." I don't know how soon after a charter amendment that's been adopted can be challenged. It doesn't seem to speak to that. Um, you know, in the future, whatever, you know, timing, you know, I, if, if there's a mechanism for modifying what's currently in their charter to clarify that it only applies to real property and not personal property, that's something I would support. You know, that was the original intent, but having said that, the ballot language was clear, you know, it did state equipment. So, you know, people had the option to read that and, and vote according to that. Um, so I guess I, I wouldn't want to make a decision now about one truck that is maybe opening the door to something in the future that we don't necessarily want. So I'd want to fully understand what those potential implications are for real property. Um, and I would be open to, you know, if there's a mechanism for modifying what we currently have to apply only to real property, I suspect that's something that people in the community would support, something I would support. Thank you.
Sure. Dan? I, I'd just like to give a little background about how we handle equipment. Um, we could trade it in. Um, I think everybody that knows when you have a vehicle and you trade it in, nine times out of 10 with me, I know I can get more money selling it outright. So being able to take this equipment and putting it towards auction, we have proven over, I don't know how many years we've been doing it, that we can get more money. So what we do, like with a pickup, we'll go in, we'll get a trade in value from where we're getting the new pickup. And then we will set that accordingly to the auction price, you know, not to be lower than that. And we have proven over time that it's very successful, um, for getting more money. And we also, we got a price from the, the chipper company that does not want our chipper and has told Kurt off Kurt that it's worth more than that, but we don't want to deal with issues chipper. Um, if there was a way that we could just do this with the equipment that we have, it's, it's worth thousands of dollars. I mean, we've already proven that. Um, and I don't have any thoughts on the land and all that, but I do know it's very beneficial for the city of Dexter with, with our equipment. Thank you.
And, and, and just to kind of build on that, you know, once, once we, once we're ready to, to put it up for auction, we, we do come to council to, to get approval to, to sell pieces of equipment. Um, through, through, through a vote of council.
Yeah.
Well, I think one thing for sure, if it sits around, it's got to get in, in a worse condition it is now. And so it's probably at its prime right, right now for sales if we're going to sell it.
But we're still using it. After the time of, then we get the new equipment. You're right, Paul. Sorry, Jamie.
Oh, that's fine. I haven't started talking yet.
Jamie, go ahead. Sorry.
Thanks. Yeah. Um, I, I mean, in the immediate term, it seems to me we're likely considering a ballot proposal. I don't, you know, I don't know where that's at. Um, it seems like there's a, considering something coming up. Is this something that would be able to go for that election if we were to do something related to a bond, for example?
So, yeah, so sorry, that's, uh, the, I, I think that there's two, two questions in there, uh, one for the bond and one for uh, the charter amendment proposal.
Um, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess, yeah, maybe even three questions. If we were having an election, yeah, one, I guess it's an open question if we're going to have an, an election for a bond. Um, if we do, would we be able to add the, the sale of, uh, of these personal property items, um, the truck and the chipper, for example? Uh, just to, to deal with a more immediate issue that we have this equipment right now. Um, and yeah, would you be able to put a charter amendment? I guess that's a third question. Would you be able to add that to an election?
Um, so, so, so I, uh, kind of answered the last question first. I think, I believe the charter amendment proposal would have to go on a November election. Um, I think that's what we concluded during the, uh, the last charter amendment process. Um, but I, I would think that you, you, you know, per the charter, you would be able to put the sale of equipment on, on any, on any election. Um, along with a, a bond proposal or, or a, a, a millage proposal to support a bond.
Hmm. Yeah, we, we know, we, we know we can put a millage proposal on, on any election is what you're saying. And the same would be for the sale of equipment. Pick, 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 whether they, whether they're on the same or they're on different ones, or they're all, you know, the timing of any of that is really more the discussion, I think.
Yeah, we're, we're really the, the only one that has, that has a set timing is, is a charter amendment proposal. So i- is that something that the council would like me to, to start drafting? Um, uh, turn around my proposal to edit the, the language to allow for the sale of, um, personal property, but not real property?
Why? You have your hand up?
Um, yeah, first of all, I want to say, I would say yes to what Justin's saying. I'm reading the MCL and it says, "If the amendment is proposed by the legislative body of the city, the amendment shall be submitted to the electors of the city at the next regular municipal or general state election or at a special election."
Hmm. That's on what page of that? One, two, or three, or?
What? I'm just, I'm on the Michigan Legislature website. I sent the link to Michelle.
Gotcha. Thanks. That sounds familiar.
Well, I think, you know, it, I think, um, what I'm hearing is that, and I guess I haven't heard from Julie, um, but it sounds like most people on the, the Zoom call here today are agreeing that it would be nice if we had options for things like equipment.
I, I say I.
Yes. We may want to sell a pencil even, so technically we can't.
Yeah. So I think, you know, Justin, I think, I don't know that there's a, you know, an urgency that that has to be for the next meeting or whatever, but I think if you could bring that back in the next short while for us to understand how that language might look. I think we're all interested in that.
Yeah, I can come back with some, with some draft language and what the timing would look like.
Yeah. There's still time. So one, one of the, one of the things that, one of the, the things that I'd like to just, um, ask a question about. And I'm not really, I guess I'm not really trying to start anything on this, but um, it, it, when, when the, when the ballot language was put out there, um, Jamie, and the, and supported by, you know, and all citizens, and then obviously, you know, ratified through the, the passing. One of the questions that I kept getting asked that I thought was, and, and I say kept getting, I, I had, I had probably five people ask me this question. But I thought it was an interesting perspective, so I'm just going to share it. And again, it's not a, doesn't mean everybody's thinking it, but there were people that were more concerned. They thought it was odd that they, they don't, we don't have to vote to spend money on land. And, okay, the, 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 the concept of selling that to them was pretty, you know, you make a decision for a reason, but the concept of actually spending the public's money was they were like, that to me would be more something I might want to weigh in on than the other. And again, I'm not trying to say that, I, I don't think frankly, I think the charter was right the way we had it before where if it was parkland and you wanted to sell it, it would require a vote of the people. I think the normal transaction of land for a government buying or selling should be left up to its elected body. Okay, now I realize we just changed that a little bit with the amendment. We have to, for any selling, but um, I just throw that out there as a, as another perspective because, uh, well, you know, to, to me, I, I, I thought it was valid, the, the, the concept that you, you know, you could overspend for something or underspend or, or not underspend, but overspend or just spend it, you know, in a way that people didn't want was an interesting comment, so. Thought I'd share it. Jamie?
Yeah, I, I think that's an interesting, an interesting point. Um, you know, when, when we started working towards putting, you know, putting something together, you know, with limited knowledge, clearly, um, you know, what stood out was the existing part of the charter about parkland. So we were just, you know, we use that as, oh, we'll just, we'll modify this to include all, you know, all public property, again, not recognized it was between real and personal. Um, that, you know, so we focused on something that was already existing in the charter and that's why it, it focused on sale and not necessarily purchase. I think so, so along the lines of sale, you know, another thing that, that could be done, you know, maybe even as it relates to real property is setting a dollar amount, you know? I mean, you know, real property below, you know, or above $50,000 or something like that. I mean, I think there are ways that you could, because, you know, one question we got is, well, what if they own this little skinny little corner of something? And they need to sell that for whatever reason. So, you know, and then purchase, I think you could add dollar amounts, I think, to either side to make. purchase, I think you could add dollar amounts, I think, to either side to make it so that it it was meaningful and and not just these random little things.
Well, like I, I wanted, the reason I wanted to go there a little bit, just because I I think one of the purposes of the goal setting is, and and it goes back to what Paul talked about, is what what's your knowledge base or what's your information that you're making a decision or having a discussion on? When I think back from back to two thousand and four, over the last seventeen years of how many pieces of property we've actually transacted, I mean, real property? The answer is a lot.
I guess.
Okay, I I mean, I I have been involved as a as village president or mayor in a lot of transactions. Okay. We, you know, Paul, how many different properties did we either asked to be donated or then we purchased, you know, to do the Mill Creek Park project? We had, we had to buy property from the gas station.
Yeah.
You know, at which is the BP, it used to be the BP now is the what is it? Mobile? I don't even know what it is now. You know, we we had to buy the burner property, which is the property across the street that goes along the, across the creek that goes along behind the Legion and the Knights of Columbus. All the way up to Haley. We've bought property over by the treatment plant from, I forget the gentleman's name who on a life lease because we figured that was beneficial. We use, you know, sewer fund money to do that. Obviously, we bought the Dan Hoy property and then sold the Dan Hoy property. We bought the Dexter and our Roadmap property. And and we've and we've sold property.
And still talking about potentially doing it with with the the Dapco site and and other sites down there in that area, right?
Yeah. You know, and we're, you know, we've, we've talked, you know, in a closed session about maybe a city office purchase, right? Anyway, I I just wanted to to bring up and share what I had heard during that thing. I I I think this would be a good step. If we could clarify the real prop or the the personal property part of it, the, you know, the the equipment. So to the point of Justin's memo, how does he get rid of a truck? How does, how do they get rid of a truck or a vehicle or a chipper or something? Or or a pencil even Julie, as you say. I think that's a good step. Do we want to use the last half hour for open comment or open discussion or or end early or I know, I know that it's a long week for everyone, so.
I mean, Cole is online. I don't know. I mean, we have two opportunities for non arranged participation at the beginning and at the end. I don't, I think you might be the only member of the public who is online. I don't know if you want to see if he has any comment.
Yep. No, absolutely. I I just want to make sure we weren't going to skip over the open discussion. If we're going to skip over open discussion, I'll go right to not arranged. Yep.
I would be fine moving on. I don't need anything. I don't need to talk about anything else.
Okay, okay, sorry. Oh, thank you for reminding me of that. I'm always happy to make sure we're doing that. Cole will go to non arranged. Cole, is there anything you'd like to say? Or Carol, you're online as well.
Uh, yeah, I didn't realize I was unmuted already. My apologies if anything came through.
Nope, you're all set, my friend.
Okay. Yeah, I Sean, I was appreciating your comments on the on the charter amendment. I I do believe that the charter was right as written and that the intent as written was civically minded. If I need to do the address, it's seven six five four Forest Street. And, you know, minimal, you know, stipulation of the type of property and or maybe a cost or acreage stipulation could prevent the sort of unintended consequences that we're looking at already. As far as, you know, if anybody had been disappointed in the pace of the video uploading, you know, this was something that I I wouldn't have minded if I had heard that somebody was expecting this or was important to them and might have prompted more uploads. But anybody is willing, anybody is happy to do that, that sort of minimal effort to say, keep going. I I'm happy to hear that. I I do have, I'm probably going to send an email to you guys about, I've been reading a lot about Taiwan's done open democracies projects that they've got going on. And I know that's maybe a little distant, but they've got a really good open source civics platform platform called the Polis, P O L dot I S. And I've got a couple of videos and a couple of short articles on how they're using that in meetings to kind of take the temperature of uncertain topics and see where certain statements align and kind of the the relative strength of groups in in meetings. So anyway, interesting stuff. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thanks, Cole. Could you just repeat that? Was it poll dot I S?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I want to make sure I heard it right. Thank you. Thanks for joining today. Carol, do you have anything to add?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Give everybody a chance, anything from anybody one last time or hey, enjoy your weekend, enjoy the sunshine and we'll see everybody Monday.
Michelle's, Michelle's waving.
Oh, she's waving goodbye or needs to say something?
I think she wants to say something.
Absolutely.
She, it looks like she's typing something.
I would also like to say that if it looks like I was possessed, it was, there's a cat clawing at my leg right now.
All the best to Pat. Okay, please.
Thank you. A little setback at first of the week, but seemed to be a little bit of yesterday where this week, some of this to clear out so that we can get her into a space to do some rehab. So.
Okay.
I I think to your question, another day, Michelle.
Sean, I may be late for the meeting on on Monday. Okay.
Okay.
I may be on the phone, I may be on the phone. Okay.
That's fine. Yeah, just just text me either way, whatever you know. If if we don't see you, we'll know where you're you're at. So have a good Saturday, everybody.
Same. Thank you. Stay safe.
Okay, stay safe. Right. Thanks, staff.
Thank you.